All right, why don't we go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order? Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, roll call. All members of council are present with the exception of, at this point, Joel Haugen, who we're expecting momentarily to be online. I think we got Brandon Lasowski online. Approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
During a motion, do I have a second? During a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments, not motion comments. Public comments. Anyone that would like to comment on anything that's not on tonight's agenda, Marissa? Like to step forward, just state your name and the city you live in for the record. Since we are live, we don't want to give out your address.
Hello, good evening, Marissa Jacobs, Scapus, Oregon. Happy New Year. Haven't seen you since last year, so hope you're all doing well. Unfortunately, I'm only able to give comment and then I'll be leaving the meeting, but I will be listening to the replay once it's posted. My name is Marissa Jacobs and I'm speaking as a citizen to you this evening. Peggy Shoemaker LeBlanc is unable to attend as her mother recently passed away. So tonight, I'm sharing with you our communication. This past Friday, February 4th, Todd Prager, an arborist from Terrigan and Associates, Inc., showed up unannounced to her home to inspect her trees bordering the Grabhorn Park. She was informed this arborist was hired by a construction company that was hired by the city. Peggy and her husband were surprised and disappointed that the city would take such steps without advance notification nor consent. Further, they were shocked when the arborist said they were considering cutting down her trees. She is extremely concerned with the construction company already hired. The city is moving forward with road construction that would kill her legacy trees planted almost 100 years ago by her father. After hearing of this, I reached out to members of the Parks and Rec Committee to inquire on the progress of the Grabhorn Park development. I was surprised to learn they have not been informed of any developments on this project. Furthermore, upon reviewing the meeting minutes from the committee, it was clearly stated in the October meeting, the committee requested to be included in all aspects of the Grabhorn planning and development. Based on these facts, it appears the city is not being a transparent collaborator, which is extremely concerning. The timing of these events are suspicious, given the limited distribution of the Buxton Ranch Development Proposal with 48 home lots and excess road aligned directly south of Cusseraway. On its face, one could deduct the topic of the Cusseraway Road expansion north through Veterans Park and the Grabhorn Park property will be on the table yet again. Mr. Mayor, this is concerning to me, as well as others in the community, given that you stated there would not be an expansion of the road. The council agreed and approved the recommendations from the Park and Rec Committee, which stipulated no road expansion. I'm hopeful this is all just a misunderstanding, and I'm kindly asking you, Mr. Mayor, to address these concerns with the community. Share with us what you are directing the city manager to do on behalf of your constituents. We deserve 100% transparency, and I appreciate your comments.
So let's just start, like, the city has hired no one that I know of.
I'd like to clarify, please. We don't have a construction company hired. We are working with 3J, the engineering company that did the original design. They've had, they've received all of your recommendations from the committee. They are redoing the design per your requests. We did hire an arborist and someone to check the wetlands, to see if there's wetlands on the property, and also to see, and I would point out too, that the arborist that, can't remember who was hired, who hired them, but when they came out, they said something to the effect of, because of the roots, that we had to give, what was it, 60, 60 feet, which would basically make it impossible to actually put a lot of the things onto the property that you all requested. So we do need to assess the trees and see if that's really, in fact, the case. But there's been no construction company that's been hired, and we are simply following up on the requests of the committee and council.
And that's what the council instruct, you, the council instructed us to do, was to go back to 3J and say, given these requests that have been made by this committee, can the park be developed in line with those? Is it feasible? You know, obviously, we wish that would have happened in November, so we would have been better able to compete for state park grants. But based on their level of busyness, 3J's, you know, this is the soonest it can happen.
Appreciate that.
We haven't, we're still waiting for the redesign from 3J.
And I would point out too, that that's simply a concept. Even once that was done, we'd still have to go out for a public bid to hire an engineering team to complete the engineering, and then from there, there'd be a whole nother bidding process for construction. So we're nowhere near any of that.
Be aware, the comments that I shared with you is exactly what was communicated to Peggy. That they were considering cutting down her trees and that the arborist was hired by a construction firm that was hired by the city. Those were the words that were directly given. I'm just sharing with you the information that, as it was communicated.
Thank you. Can we, A, talk to whoever, I mean, I assume it's the engineering firm that hired the arborists and say-
It is the engineering firm that hired the arborists, correct?
Whoever's communicating for them to the property owner is way out of line. Because there's, I don't think the city has the right to go onto somebody else's property and cut down their trees, A.
Well, and that was never what was-
To me, I'm about property rights, and I'm sorry, that's their property. They can keep their trees. We have to figure out how to design it around that without impacting their property. I'm a property rights person, so.
No, and the only reason, like I said, to even go on there was to determine whether or not that, whether we could actually be within that 60-feet buffer, because if that was the case, and we really couldn't, that would actually probably prevent us from putting in sports fields or any of the other amenities, or a lot of the other amenities that were requested. So we were trying to determine whether or not that was accurate. 3J just did hire the arborist.
I'm just saying that, you know, no one should be showing up-
Right.
-probably saying, yeah, we're with the contractor or whatever, and we're trying to determine if we have to, the city-
And this, and this is news to us.
That's where I got a problem.
And this is news to us, though, as well. We did not know.
That's where I have a problem.
This is like the exact point I'm trying to make, that I mentioned at a school board meeting as well, is, is this the first time that the two of you are hearing about this?
Yes.
Thank you. And again, you know, without clarifying with us, there's only so much we can help with if people aren't communicating with leadership. So I appreciate you coming, but I encourage people to, again, contact the source before, assuming that we've done something that we have, you know, we could fill in some of these details for people and hopefully put them at ease.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention, because to me, it's wrong.
One more question. Are we going to follow up on that? Sounds like there's a miscommunication somewhere down the line. I mean, the arborist is three or four steps from the-
I can, I can reach out to Steve at 3J. 3J is not a construction company. They don't do construction. They do architectural and engineering services. So I don't-
Maybe that was on the page.
I don't know, and it seems like any arborist that they would hire would be familiar with what they did. So it's hard for me even understand how that could have been messaged. But to the extent that 3J needs to clarify with their arborist, the services they provide, and what was asked of them, obviously, that needs to happen, because there was a communications breakdown some-
It's just a simple phone call.
And, and as in other matters like this, I assume that you would email us and follow up as, as you usually do with other complaints.
Right, I mean, the, the idea was just to get, we want to determine, first off, was, you know, get a, get an arborist to go out there and look at the trees, and then also to get a wetland delineation, to see how much of the property really is impacted by wetlands. And that would, because that's going to dictate everything about what the concept ends up looking like.
But just to reassure everyone in the room that, like other issues that are brought up to us, you follow up and circle back, and we get, we get the end answer. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to comment on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move forward to the consent agenda. January 18th, 2022, City Council Meeting Minutes and the appointment of Michael Sykes to the Scapus Parks and Recreation Committee. Put a motion.
I moved.
Hearing a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Old Business, Resolution Number 22-03, Resolution granting a non-exclusive gas utility franchise to Northwest Natural Gas Company, fixing terms, conditions, and compensations of such franchise. We'll handle that first, as that's our resolution, and then we'll handle the ordinance.
Correct. So for the request of council, the agreement's been changed that it's a 10-year term instead of 20.
That's the only amendment, right?
Right. I think there was a couple, what they described in Scrivener's errors, they cleaned up a few things.
They found a couple of them.
Yeah, but yes, the 10-year terms, the major change.
We do have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-03.
Mr. Mayor.
That's President Grayson.
I move that council adopt Resolution 22-03, a resolution granting a non-exclusive gas utility franchise to Northwest Natural Gas Company, fixing terms, conditions, and compensation of such franchise as written.
Hearing a motion, is there a second?
Oh.
No, no, that's a, that's separate.
Last sentences? Okay, thank you.
Second.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Excellent, ordinance number 898, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 706, expired franchise agreement. This will be a public hearing, so I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. And I'm handing over with the public hearing open. Alex. Name's on it.
So with this particular item, it was recommended to us by legal counsel that, because this was an ordinance previously, that we repeal that particular ordinance and obviously make this a resolution moving forward, which you just approved.
All right, is public hearing, is there anyone that would like to speak to ordinance number 898? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any questions by council, or do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Miller. I move council approve ordinance 898 and ordinance repealing ordinance number 706, an expired franchise agreement as written.
Hearing a motion by Council Miller, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council polling. All right, on the first reading, ordinance number 898, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 706, an expired franchise agreement is on first hearing, and we'll come back at the next council meeting for discussion and a vote. New business, street project and budget presentation, Mr. Sukow.
Here in council, good evening. So it is actually with great excitement that I'm here to present this tonight. A few years ago, these meetings that we had and work sessions were of a grim nature, and now we're optimistic and moving forward with the support of the community and the fuel tax. We're, we'll start getting some things done, and tonight, we're going to talk about them. I hope I mentioned it, we did one of these presentations last March, so this is just kind of an annual update. Not picking it up.
Just for them.
Closer, closer.
No, I know, I'm sorry. Yeah, first slide. So agenda, oh, and then just to open to, you know me, I love interactive work sessions, so any questions, please, then talk about this stuff. Tonight, we're going to talk about the street's funding sources, the budget, our sidewalk repair program, project status of construction projects, our proposed plan moving forward, and then open up for questions. Just as a review, I know most of you have seen this many times. Funding sources for the street fund is interest that the money in the bank earns, inspection fees that we collect for construction projects and development, state fuel tax, which is our primary revenue source for this fund, our local fuel tax, and then the surface transportation, which is the federal gas tax. Reiterate, is revenue we receive that can only be used on capital projects within the city, create improvements, and we're going to be talking about that here in a little bit, where we're going to be doing some of those projects this year. A quick recap of the budget, things are definitely looking positive. The one thing that I do want to, I won't run through all these numbers, the one thing I do want to have you note is the contingency, you'll see a reduction in it. Because of the projects we're about to talk about, we will be dipping into our contingency fund. So we've been saving our money over the last little bit with the fuel tax coming in. Now it's time to start actually on the ground and building some of these projects. So we will see some of those savings kind of deplete a little bit. Any questions on this stuff? The other thing that is in here is like the surface transportation, it shows that full 607 as an expenditure, that's not necessarily the case. We do have some paving projects coming out this year that will hit on that, but I had to show the entire amount, but the hopes are is it won't anywhere close to that, I think, from the 400, but, that's here in just a minute, so. All right. So the sidewalk repair program has been out since March of 2020. This is the program that we offer to the community for homeowners who have damaged failing sidewalks in front of their home to get estimates, apply for our program, if it's a fit, if there's legitimately the damage or concerns going on, we'll inspect it, we'll agree with them, they will collect estimates, half of the lowest estimate, we'll pay half of the project up to $1,000 limit. Since then, it's been kind of a slogan, we've received 10 applications for that program in that time since 2020. Seven have been on through, we've aware the project has actually been completed. We have three pending right at the moment, and I think that the thing, if we want to keep this moving, if there's the desire with the council, is that we need, obviously, in the spring, maybe to get our publication out there and let people know this is going on. We really haven't done that so much, because the dead of the winter isn't really when you want to be pouring concrete and doing construction projects. So my thoughts were is, with spring right around the corners, we'll get some sort of a public notification one.
And I'm wondering, just because this is such an exciting opportunity for homeowners to take advantage of, and just from our perspective, keeping those routes, walkable routes that we do have a little more safe, sometimes things, and this isn't to anybody's fault, it's just how we are in nature as we read things. Sometimes things that are super important might get lost in, like, the general newsletter. So, you know, totally understandable if it, like, took up a whole page of the newsletter or was like a separate, on like a bright colored paper, something that just makes it like, this is something separate than our normal catch-you-up-to-date kind of news going on. This is something that's kind of a standalone, really important thing that we want you to, like, take the time to read. And I'm that way even with, you know, school emails and school newsletters every week, you know, your eye just kind of skims, and if there's a way, maybe we could make something really stand out at this-
Yeah, I think, I think a half-page, we could probably grab a picture or something that catches your attention and get a quick write-up on it.
Great orange font or something.
Already.
Yeah.
Does it know? So, yeah, no, that, that was our approach. Obviously, have the Facebook page and the app, so they'll go out on that as well.
Yeah, no, I'm fully in favor of that, that kick in the spring, for sure.
Get started sidewalk warranty program.
Is there, how many, how many different, or how many total applications can we get to fill that spot, basically?
We've been, when the project, when the program first started, we budgeted 25,000 per year, because we weren't sure how many, I believe, I should check, 50,000 is what we budgeted for this year, because we were hopeful that more people would participate. It's just not getting the traction yet to do that, but I'm pretty sure we have 50,000 sitting in there. So 50 applicants, it's a first-come, first-served program, and they would have to roll over if they wanted to apply for the next year or move forward.
Just thinking I'm part of that, you can kind of reintroduce it, and then also say, hey, we have this many spots left, if it is, starts dwindling where we are, so you can almost make it, you know?
And we've always in the back of our mind known that is, is, this moves forward. If it starts to pick up popularity, we would expand on that budget. It's just been a trial and error kind of thing from the word go, and, you know, with only a few coming in, we're keeping that in a number that seems realistic and not put all of our money in there and then not have it for other projects, so.
Mr. Mayor? To Council Grayson's point, is there, do we have any data or stats yet on, on our Facebook, our social media posts? What seems to be grabbing more attention? Is it videos or specific types of posts? I mean, this might be, since this is an important project, you-
You know, it's on the line, and he actually has more access to those staff, and I don't know if he's listening to that question, but I think one of the biggest things, actually, that got the most attention was really the stuff on the, on the peace scandal.
That's for like wildfire, but hey, it was a video.
Yeah, that was a video.
People beyond Scapus are very interested in, but-
That got a ton of attention. Isaac, I don't know if you want to weigh in on that?
Sure, sure. Yeah, so obviously, the peace scandal was pretty big. Things that are different tend to attract the most attention. So, you know, we post a lot of agendas and meeting videos and things, and those are the kind of things that come out cyclically all every month, but it's the new stuff that we've been doing over the last month or two that's really kind of picked interest. Then obviously, you know, hot-button topics that are going to draw attention as well. So for something like that, I think, I think having something bright and flashy and, you know, maybe we can do some creative, you know, embedding of video as well to kind of draw more eyes to it and spread the word around, so.
Isaac, would you feel comfortable, I'm kind of putting this on you, because this is your, your realm right now, as if there was some, you know, I don't want to say like YouTube video, how to be a part of the sidewalk repair program, like, you know, step one, do the, you know, like, and then step two, like, interview someone who had done it, oh, now look at this beautiful sidewalk, you know, like, something that is kind of catchy, like a 30-second little reel kind of a thing that, like a before and after, and just kind of tells people, yeah. This is exactly, you know, call this, fill out this, go online, I don't know. Just a 30-second little kind of video that makes some cool background music.
I'm sorry, Isaac.
Yeah, right, I'm like, delegating this to Isaac.
Yeah. With some demo.
Yeah, no, that's, that's the, that's the kind of-
Isaac, can you go into your speaker better? We're really low.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, much better.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, so no, that's exactly the kind of creative stuff that I was kind of alluding to, that really grabs attention. We've talked internally a little bit about the kind of outreach in social media we could do using a longer timeframe as well, where we could do this over the period of a week to hold attention, and, you know, where we could talk about, you know, here's, you know, here's the, the pre and post, and here's the person's experience, and here's how you do it, and do these in short clips that are easily digestible, but hold the attention longer, because it helps to spread the reach as well. I think that's something that, that's something we could easily achieve.
Or Isaac, perhaps multiple posts, like, you know, one post would be about the start of the project, and then a mid-project post, and then a follow-up post, so it's, you know, it's flashing up a few different times on our webpage or our Facebook.
Absolutely, absolutely. We've talked about doing those kind of longer-term runs on other projects we're working on as well. So I think, I think that that would tie in well to kind of the public affairs, I guess, PR portion of what I do, is I think that those would tie in well. So, yeah, I think that would be achievable for sure.
Excellent.
Think really, just a narrated PowerPoint would accomplish what you want to do, like, you could just show a slide and some, there could be some voices in the background walking you through and turn little thing.
I just, I think we're all in agreeance of giving this a little more airtime. Yeah.
Saw you kind of looking during this for something you wanted.
Oh, no, I was just, you know, plotting to make you be in the video.
All right, why don't we move forward?
Oh, but before that, you were kind of like, so I was just- Any questions on the program?
Yeah.
Oh. All right, so for this year, sidewalk projects. Well, in the past, what we've completed is the infill of the broken sidewalks that were heat from the tree roots along the highway. We put in the ADA ramps along Southeast 6. It's a little misleading on the sidewalk infill, we partnered with that developer. Part of the sidewalks on Southeast 6 were part of that development, part of them were us utilizing them being there, which we're always keeping our eyes open for, to work with development. While they're already mobilized, the costs are at and a half sometimes on that, so, like I said, we're always staying tuned to that. Planned is obviously Old Portland Road, which is underway. I'm seeing most of you have probably passed through there and seen that underway, anticipating that being done by April or May, they're moving right along. There is some utility work that will slow down their progress, you won't see as much, because they'll be putting pipe into the ground and different little things, but they are making good headway on it, so we're happy to see that.
Lots of positive feedback.
Great.
And, and some people have had questions, like, why this project, and maybe not another, but I think that this is a great illustration of, like, more bang-for-your-but kind of a thing, like, big impact, low fight, you know, we're just ticking them off as they come the best we can, and, and thank you for keeping an eye out for that.
Which is something that we will touch on here in just a minute, is, is like, next steps.
Sure.
The ADA ramp placement isn't a sited project yet, it's a generic concept that we want to move forward with. We want to start looking at wheelchair ramps throughout the city. It is common practice that the cities will maintain the wheelchair ramps and the sidewalks in front of the homes with the property owner's responsibility. The other component of that is, we can't do street overlay projects if the sidewalks don't meet ADA compliance, as in those ramps. So before, it's kind of like our footwork. So if there's somewhere that we're eyeballing to do a pavement project that has existing ramps, we have to make sure that those are compliant, we move forward with them. So that's just, like I said, a general project that we're going to be looking to do. The Southeast Third Place Sidewalk and Vine, those were the projects that are still on our horizon, that we tried for some April to school grants, we were unsuccessful in that. I'll touch on that again here in a minute. I, I believe that we've, to kind of keep on that and maybe buy for those, but that's something I want to get your feedback on here in just a few minutes, so. And then, as I said, partnerships with development, those are great opportunities for us, so just keeping our eyes open on that.
I had one quick question for you. Would it be possible for us to put up some signs that say, you know, like, you're the Old Portland Road project, to say, you know, fuel tax dollars at work or something like that?
As soon as they kind of get some of their signage down and out of there, we do already have those, that we'll start posting along there, it'll say, this project funded by the fuel tax.
Yeah, just something to help boost that, you know?
Yeah, as they, as they work south, which appears they're doing, we'll just follow them up with some signs for that advertising. Is there any other questions on the sidewalk? Streets, or paving, is what I kind of what I mean with this. Few years ago, we paved a portion up on the top of Northwest Peak, and this past year, we paved a section at the end of Maple Street, and then we paved Northwest First in front of the fire station, smaller projects, some of our worst sections. As I mentioned earlier, we've been kind of saving our exchange fund dollars, we now have the visible amount, 600,000, give or take, in there that we are going to move forward this year. We just signed a contract with an engineering firm to do the pavement design. On that is the list here, I was going through, that would be Southwest Hablec, hoping to do an overlay from Highway 30 West to Old Portland Road, all of that, basically, around Fred Myers and next stop, McDonald's and everything, we're going to repave that stretch. With the amount of traffic that that stretch, if you look at it right now, it may not look terrible, you don't really see big potholes, that stretch gets so much traffic that if you let these roads deteriorate to a certain point, you're rebuilding it. We don't want to let that road get to-
Myrtle Street, like Myrtle, between 3rd and 4th.
If they go too long, and, and this was something that we touched on way back when, when we did the index, and we kind of showed that drop-off, we don't want to get to that point. So we're trying to catch this one on the front end, how that we can. So that's one of the projects. The other would be overlays of Bella Vista, Sunset, 11th and 14th, Ridge and Cliff, everything up on that northwest portion of town that are all interlaid. Those date back to the 60s, 70s, it's the original asphalt, it's perfect candidates for an overlay. The subgrade is actually in pretty darn good shape for its age, but it's getting to the point where if we wait much longer, we're going to have gravel streets up there, so I want to overlay all that. To do that, we do have some waterline work on Bella Vista to do, that we're wrapping up the design, and Public Works will be installing that, it's about 800 feet of waterline, be doing that over the duration of the spring, operation for this project. What we do want to do, and said this many times, is- What we don't want to do, and said this many times, is worse thing is to pave a brand new road and then have to come back and dig it up. That's our preparations for that.
I have a question. Just thinking about timeline and weather. Are you looking to do these overlay projects one at a time or, I mean?
The contractor would mobilize and do them all at once. That's how you keep the cost down.
Sure.
Station, they just come and pull in town, they get them all done. They'll probably off that hill in less than a week's time. Hablek would be like a night project over a couple of nights, one to go in and grind it, do the preparation. Next night, come back, pave it, and come back and do all the striping.
And are we like anticipating this summer, another two years?
Late summer, early fall is.
Okay, okay. Yeah, near future.
Yeah, it's this year.
Yeah.
These are all projects on the horizon for this year. And then the street light replacement, I think all of you are aware of that. UD has been chugging away on that. They're a little over halfway done. Streets I've seen, improvement, neighborhood's looking really good. You're as excited as I am with that. And then the annual crack ceiling is something that Public Works has been doing for the last four years. That's necessarily an appealing process. I mean, you do see the little squiggly lines all over the road. That is keeping the water from getting in there and actually more damage. And then we were fortunate enough that the equipment we were using from the County Road Department sold it to us at a fantastic price. So we now own the equipment to do this moving forward. So that's just fantastic. This year, you will see that Public Works is going to be doing a lot of emphasis on crosswalks. We're going to be highlighting crosswalks, road markings and things. Last year, we weren't able to purchase any white paint. It was such a shortage that it wasn't available. Now have a line in on it for this summer. So you'll start to see a lot of the white striping on the roads a lot better this year.
Not actually in our hands yet, is it, the paint?
No. Within the last week, we got a guarantee we can get it.
Perfect.
I reached out to ODOT because our normal supplier.
Right.
Was able to source it. So I reached out to my resources there and they lined us up with somebody who could get it.
Awesome.
Pretty confident that we're going to get our hands on it.
It's on a truck in Canada right now.
No, but it's amazing, just a year, just a year off of not having that product and.
We were only able to buy like 10 gallons of paint last year and that was it. There was just nothing.
Yeah.
Questions on the street projects?
Dave, what's an example of county roads within city limits?
As far as which ones are county roads?
Yeah.
Miller Road, Ease, all the way up and around, JP West from the park up. EJ Smith, pretty much in its entirety from First Street.
What, what determines what is a county road and what is a city maintained road?
Ownership. I mean, the county physically has the ownership of the right of way, so to speak.
And they want that? That seems like.
We've been, we've been working with them over the past few years to, well, some sort of a partnership where they bring it up to city standards or as close to it as they can before we take it because we really don't want to inherit their problems. It's just more maintenance that we can do. So we've been working with them. They, they do have the desire to turn them over as their budget and things allow. Been working with the county on Elm Street. They're actually applying for a Safe Route to School grant to do sidewalks along the section from 4th down to 8th. In that really narrow lot, I think everybody's probably seen it. We've been working with them to try to do some improvements and if they do, then we would look at.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Mostly the county roads are our collectors, unfortunately, our highest traveled roads.
Well, the county does do a really good job too, like when it snows, they do a good job of keeping it clear. That's my observations anyway. I applaud them for that, for what I've witnessed anyway. And then you were going to talk about the Safe Routes to School or, because my next question's about that.
Yeah, if we want to move to the next slide, the proposed plan. So as far as proposed plan, what we want to do, continue planning and implementation of the future projects. We're going to work to update our CIP annually, which you'll see represented in your budget books. There's, to get the start of that, and then we'll touch on that every year in this fashion. Obviously, we talked about the sidewalk program and continue to work on that and enhance it. Street light project will be 95% done at the end of this budget year. Obviously, there'll be some ongoing little things. We continue to watch for dark streets, old sacks and things to do enhance. And that, a bit over the last few years, if somebody reaches out and says, hey, can you throw a three light? We'll go evaluate and see if it's a good fit, or things like that. Two, alternate funding, which comes to the school zone stuff. And work with Columbia County. So our partnership is strong there. We do some share work. We basically have an agreement where if there's a pothole, our guys will take care of it so that they don't have to. And trade, they come and do striping for us and things. So other than out of pocket expenses, we're just doing partnerships with them with, you know, whoever has the best scenario for that. We do some sweeping on county roads and just different little things to kind of trade off and make for a greater community at the end of the day. As I said earlier, partner with development. And then we will continue to put the focus of the local tax to sidewalks. As initially said, this came out, that a portion of it may need to be for pavement maintenance. Maintenance is on sidewalks and I think that's still the target. I think we're gaining ground on the pavement maintenance. So now going to the sidewalk projects. For the ATM, and Alex, this is where you can check if you want. For the ATM, a few years ago, there was emphasis brought to Third Place and Vine around the schools. We still have that emphasis. We still want that to be a safe target. But I'd like to get, I guess, council feedback. Is, is that still the direction? Do we want to keep reapplying for the grants? Those projects average a little over 700,000 per the engineer's estimate. So we're talking about 1.4, 1.5 million dollars to do those two projects. Is that where we want to put some of the remaining balance of the fuel tax? Or do we want to share the wealth with the community? That's, that's where I'm looking to update, I guess, if you will.
Well, and the other thing I'd point out too, you know, particularly with that grant program is because we're not, we are not Title I school. We can keep trying, but it's possible we're not going to ever really have a truly competitive application unless they changed, you know, the program requirements or something like that. So that's the other thing just to keep in mind is that that's the main reason why we washed out of that program and weren't funded the first time.
Mr. Mayor. I mean, for me, I think that that's kind of my, personally, I think that's a high priority for us, especially because of how, how many small kids walk in that area and just the, the need for sidewalks. And I would hate for us to continually wait for, you know, the state to say, hey, here's some funds for you. When we, you know, we don't know how long that will take or if we can even get that. I would like to keep that as our priority personally.
I, I tend to agree with the hope that maybe there's money in the new infrastructure spending bill coming from the feds that can be applied to those type of projects as well. They're printing plenty of money, so.
Oh, my gosh.
What would be the alternative project?
Honestly, to be determined. That, that's something that, that we could talk about.
Nothing like that, that you're.
Yeah, like I said, we, we want to look, oops, right. Regionally, I think that Columbia Boulevard is a primary around Memphis. I think that First Street, I think there's sidewalks that need to be around mid-school. There's, there's a lot of regions that need the additional funding projects that we would talk about collaboratively. So that's what I wanted to get a little feedback, is I'll start putting something together and come back to you options. Or we can just keep moving down the same track. The other thing though, when it comes to the school boundaries, is we talked about maybe getting a study done, understand which routes those kids are really going to use, you know, is Vine Street more of a priority or is Third Place more of a priority? I don't think we have a completely better picture on that yet. We know both are priorities because obviously kids are migrating to the south or migrating to the east. We know there's a lot of new developments to the east that we think that those kids may need to go down Vine Street and maybe that needs to be. So probably do a, a study of some version to evaluate some of those routes. School zones, make sure the school zones. And I know the traffic committee has talked about this.
Always have options.
So, Mr. Mayor, maybe where the school speed zones are would be a good priority too. And then kind of what instantly comes to mind is just inward out.
I agree.
I thought you said, I'm not sure that Third Place is the, is the best street. I just don't see many younger kids walking to school now. I see kids, fourth grade and older walking and along Vine Street. There's just not a lot of small kids. My observation, this is not anything I could certify, but it, it just doesn't seem like fewer kids walking to school than what they're used to be years ago. I think the area that appears to me that might need sidewalks and might fit in is actually that area on 6th Street, where you get to Vine Street, where there's that curve there and tend to walk in the middle of the road sometimes. There's no sidewalk on either. There is a little sidewalk on one side.
There is sidewalk now connectivity all the way down the one side. That was part of the 6th Street project. We have to get that. We would anticipate that the other side, the east side of that road would, that would develop and at some point should that field something.
But I do, I do think that I'd like to see the money continue to go to schools and whatever is the best application of that money.
I mean, it's not unknown that this city was built in a patchwork form with different codes and regulations and that most of our older neighborhoods don't have sidewalks because they weren't required to be put in when they were constructed. And I think in general, any place that we can find, you know, like Old Portland Road, where you can kind of tick off those connections is really important. But, you know, we just continue to hear from the public about those school zone areas. And I like the idea of like starting in and moving out. I, I think that we owe it to what the community provided us in terms of feedback at our annual town meeting. You know, maybe things have changed, but I, I feel like we continue to still hear those messages, school zones, so.
Mr. Mayor, on the inward out philosophy too, I think one of the filters that needs to be applied there too is the, the roads with higher speed limits too. Like Old Portland Road is an example. Instead of 25, those are areas that I would think would, we would want to focus our efforts on sidewalks on as well. If it's, you know, a toss-up.
And with this project, we actually push out nearly city limits. That'll be behind.
Then how, oh, so from Highway 30 on, we, it's county on Columbia? From Highway 30 up Columbia?
It is actually now a city road as of two years ago, all the way to the Public Works wastewater.
Okay, thank you.
That was part of the Chapman link.
Right, the switch.
All right, anything else? Thank you. Next item, a community enhancement program update. Assistant to the mayor, Isaac Butler. I changed his title while you were on vacation.
Vacation? I was on vacation. She had to move per contract. It was not a vacation.
Vacation moving. My boss says it's a vacation.
Really need to discuss the definition of vacation, I think.
Isaac. All right, all right, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for having me back before you with the community enhancement program. I will try to make this brief. Basically took your feedback during the meeting about combining some questions and reducing the burden on applicants generally, as well as the request to send out in email survey asking specifically what council may have been looking at and how they would want the application changed. I took the feedback from that and basically just applied it to the application as is. It has been reduced by one question. So now it's only seven. We removed the content that was requested, including the detailed questions about the communities being targeted by the programs to reduce the burden on applicants, cleaned up some scrivener's errors, and we made the forms a little bit more clear to read as requested by Council Soski. We've made no changes to any of the other plans for the program aside that. So if you have any questions, I am happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Thanks for making those changes, Isaac.
Thank you, Isaac.
Absolutely happy to.
We have a motion.
Mayor, I move council adopts the new CEP documents as written in Exhibit B. Increase the budget allocation to 40,000, running a fiscal year 22, 23. Adopt an annual 1%, annual 1% increases to the CEP.
Hearing a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Council President Grayson, just by a hair. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, city council liaisons. Here's the list. This is the current liaisons. What I was wanting to do is have, if anyone wanted changes or if everyone's happy where they are.
Oh, and Mayor, one thing I would add to is that we had discussed the addition of the liaison for the 50-year vision process.
Oh, yeah.
That would be added. So just sorry about that.
And I asked Tyler Miller if he would be interested in doing that, and he said yes. So really, my feeling is just everyone's comfortable where they're at.
I think there are some situations where these committees meet during the daytime. Difficult for people that have work in these committees don't always have a virtual option. I'm kind of mind as to if it or not, someone's ability to be involved.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
The 50-year visioning and planning, I did have a conversation with City Manager Rains regarding that and it was explained to me that it's probably going to be a sizable commitment. And it's going to be a long-term commitment for several years. So I would just ask that you consider maybe removing me and reassigning Community Club just to make sure that I'm not spread too thin.
Removing you.
I'm currently assigned to Community Club.
Removing you from Community Club?
Correct. I mean, I, I'm okay doing it if that's what you'd like. I just throw that out there.
The 50-year vision would be great for you. I think it's a.
Is there a council member that's already active in Community Club or would?
That would be ideal, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I don't believe there is. I would come as anybody does.
Would you like to do it?
I, I'd be happy to do it, but I think.
Is that an evening?
How often they even meet?
Is that, wasn't saying, is that an evening meeting? Maybe that's one that.
There's so few people in the community club, to be honest. I don't think they really have any, have you been to any regular meetings?
To be honest with you, it completely fell off my radar. I apologize, but it, it did.
Five or six people that they sort of just communicate amongst themselves. In fact.
Don't know if that's worth our.
Like the funds, they asked. Portland State, they were aware of. They said, we'd be happy to kind of head that up with my space lifting and the. Security and things. No, some people, but that's kind of how they operate. They just kind of see something they might like to be involved with.
Why don't we just leave that one blank since it doesn't sound like we'll remove it?
Okay.
Because you got the senior community center. Aren't you serving on that?
That was Brandon currently.
Brandon, and that's what I was referring to. I don't know if it's. Brandon, during the day, it's really hard for him to.
Brandon.
Right, that's true.
Oh.
Oh.
Would you like to do the senior center stuff? You've been doing it, it sounds like, anyway.
I, I have been, so I've been all the time regularly and always our city manager.
Why don't we put you there?
I would just add that with all of these, if we can find council members that have an actual interest in these two, it's likely to turn out a lot better.
Yeah.
We, we need to match, excuse me, people's interest with what we're assigning to.
It's a community center now too.
I wasn't going to say anything. I was going to stay quiet over here.
So how about we do that? We'll just drop the community club altogether as far as like a liaison setup?
And clearly I've established some great expectations. And clearly I've established some great expectations there by them, so.
Yeah.
Probably safe.
And then we'll put Pete in as the senior center. Brian, Brandon will still stay with the Historical Society.
So I just want to make sure, so. Pete has two committees then.
With the traffic safety.
Traffic and senior then. Perfect. And then Doyle has.
Traffic.
No.
Parks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, no, he he had parks and.
Okay.
Well, he was on the one on her gear, and that's really longer a committee, so.
That one's done.
We can rekindle that if you like.
Hundred and one year.
Yeah, the hundred and one, yeah.
Yes. Kind of like my place in the race. Hundred in first place.
Traffic Safety is a wonderful committee to be on, and I I have really benefited from that and really enjoyed it because, uh. Nothing gets ever gets swept under the rug. We might not do what everybody wants us to do. But everything, the littlest thing gets talked about, discussed, uh, and it comes to a head and make make some kind of decision on it. I mean, I really appreciate that. But if there's someone else that wants to be on that, I don't mind being on it. I love being on it. But it's a great experience if anybody and they do have virtual options for the meeting. So I'm happy to give that up if somebody want that experience. It really is that I've been very impressed with how things operate.
I share the same sentiment, although for me with having children at home and whatnot, it is convenient for me to attend virtually. Whereas some other meetings are only.
I think we have to keep making there at least one of us for sure because there'd be some.
Yeah, I think that what we're looking at looks good.
Okay.
So do I have a motion to approve?
So, uh, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, sorry.
Tyler, you're doing whatever you're, okay, you're you're liaison to whatever the mayor wants you to do.
I don't see that phrase as a question, so.
I I made Isaac the assistant to the mayor, so.
Um, I think Council Polling had been on the Economic Development Committee last year. Is that still the case, Mr. Mayor? Are you gonna, are you?
Did you want to stay on that or do you have?
I can stay on that.
You're a business guy. I mean, you're involved with it, yeah.
And he's, and are you staying on the port as well then?
Yeah, and the the ports just it's they're both, I can be tell on them. It's just, it's fine. I try and. On when I can.
Okay.
Good.
Sure. Do you have a motion?
So, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry. Um, so I just want to make sure I understand. So my responsibilities are going to be, so I don't pull on what I did last year, and I, again, I apologize. Is nine oh one and then also the fifty year vision.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do I have a motion?
What you're passionate about.
Yeah.
You won't forget.
Here are a motion by Council McHugh. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Polling, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item, calendar. Everyone should be looking forward to Saturday because it is our goal setting session. Be here in the morning, bring coffee, eight thirty AM.
I think they'll have coffee.
Yeah, we'll we'll have snacks and coffee and all that good stuff, breakfast and lunch.
Oh, first.
But hey, if you're picky about your coffee, you should bring it.
Our next council meeting is actually on a Tuesday, February twenty second. Work session at six o'clock, council meeting at seven o'clock, Planning Commission meeting this Thursday at seven PM, Parks and Rec Committee on the seventeenth at six PM. Economic Development Committee on the twenty fourth at noon, Planning Commission, the twenty fourth at seven PM. Alex, what do you have?
Um, I just want to say I'm looking forward to seeing everybody on Saturday for the retreat and, um. Some time back, there had been a public comment regarding fireworks, and I know that, you know, that kind of. We talked about it a little bit, but didn't really have time to follow up, and I was just curious if there'd be any continued interest, maybe looking at that before we roll back into summer. Um, there were some concerns. I just want to see if if you all would be interested in following up on that.
Uh, for me, it's a, it's a yes. We as council need to make a decision on, I mean, there's only so many options, right? And literally, it's it's what? Either we ban them all together, um, or, uh, we can work with, um, Chief Pritchard to declare. A temporary fire ban if the conditions present. Um, so I don't know what other options there are, but, uh, who has the authority to declare if there's a temporary ban? Is it, is it the Fire Marshal who, and is that considered Chief Pritchard? I don't know how that works.
The the statute on that is really ambiguous, and it's been, it has been interpreted in different ways by different jurisdictions. The safest course of action would be that both the the city council as well as the fire chief would would make the declaration that would cover all of our base.
So, and I want to remind everybody listening to that this is a really two concern type issue. There's the the noise and the PTSD issue that, um, is a real issue. For some, there's, um, the people that, um, also have animals that are afraid of the noises as well, and then there's a fire danger too. So, um, looking at this, uh, wholly as just a fire issue might not accomplish what we're really trying to do here also. So I think we do need to put some thought into that and have a discussion about it.
Let's have a discussion.
Yes, please.
Nothing else? Councilor Miller, do you have anything?
I just one thing, um, I, uh, with the issue that came up in public comment, um, uh. I don't have my thoughts collected on it, so I apologize if this comes across wrong, but, um, our city staff does an excellent job of communicating with us too. And, um, what was presented was completely different than what we all had agreed and understood. And, um, I would just, uh, suggest that in the future that we be mindful. Um, that information is not always accurate, especially when it goes party to party to party. So rather than us, um, debating certain things or making comments that might not be accurate. That we just simply say to whoever the, um, person is that's going to find the information out to, you know, find out what happened, come back to us, we'll review. The facts on both sides, and then we'll talk about it further. I felt like tonight the issue went on a little bit longer. And was a little bit more pointed than what it needed to be, um, not having all the information. I feel like we could have just. You know, instructed city staff to bring back the information about what actually happened, and then we would be able to review on a more factual basis. That's all I have. Thanks.
Council Polling.
Council Miller, you're you're referring to Marissa's comments?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and it's not, it was, it's just to be clarified too, it's not necessarily just her comment, it's just in general, you know, when an issue like that comes up. I think we just should be a little bit more mindful of let's collect more facts and then we can have a a more complete, accurate conversation about it.
So polling.
So I, you know, I just want to say thank you to staff. Uh, the sidewalk program is coming along greatly. I drive through Old Portland Road every day, and that's been a problem for a long time. I'm so happy to see those improvements coming along. And, uh, hopefully the, uh, the rest of the citizens can see all the work, uh, as we go along. So thank you very much.
Um, yes, thanks, Dave. You were a big, um, item, like you were on every item tonight, so you you had a big night. Yeah, Public Works Night, love it. Thank you. Um, just to piggyback off of what Councilor Miller said, I think, um. What occurred tonight continues to occur, and that is not touching base with the source. And I feel like, you know, we're caught off guard, staff's caught off guard, we're in the business of service. Um, our intentions are are true and and, um, there's no backdoor kind of deals happening. And just if we could. Just if if we could just tell the public, like, lines of communication are open. We want to talk to you. We're here to answer questions. So, um, you know, I just, I wish that the other side could see that that we're, our intentions are 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 good. And we we want, we do what we say and, um, you know, if 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 other parties could just commit to joining us in that mission of of transparency. That we're not here, you know, again, creating kind of these backdoor deals or all this stuff is happening. But again, I I appreciate when people do see an issue that they do bring it to us. I think that's so important. Because so many times assumptions are made and then, you know, neighbors are finding out that then things are happening and that's not even true. So I do appreciate, um, citizens like Marissa that do come to us and and share those things so that we can, we can address it. But it doesn't always have to be done in this setting that our our lines of communication are always open.
So McHugh.
Just to follow up on that, I I do appreciate, and I think comments from the public are an important part of that line of communication. We don't want to discourage people from making their their comments. Uh, and they're not always going to be a hundred percent correct, and and I think she, people know that in general, you know, that they might have a little bit of misinformation because it is a bit hearsay. But I think it's important that we have that. Uh, I I I think. Important aspect of how we. And, uh, I just, Dave, thanks for all the good work you put in there at this next meeting. And I'd, uh, had some real concerns about this and the help from Alex today. I'd heard about it, but Project, the Austin Ranch Project and. I I I'm going to try to keep an open mind, but lots that are under five thousand dollars, five, excuse me, five thousand square feet average. Development like that, uh, and that includes the bigger lots that are considerably bigger than five thousand square feet. Doesn't make sense. These are going to be really, really tiny homes. I don't understand. Things in there that using Veterans Park as a. Area that, for that big of lots, because Veterans Park buys them from free space or something like that. But I'm just concerned about this. Doesn't seem to be a good fit for our community. Ten, twelve years ago, whatever it was, there was a big effort to put another development in there of fewer homes. And that was turned away. These are more homes, smaller homes, and more into the flood plain. It's environmentally, it just doesn't seem to work for me. This group did this, they didn't have to do this.
It's it's voluntary. That's correct.
But at the same time, they're at step three or step four in the process now, and it's the first I've heard of it. Not that I have to hear about it.
They don't actually have a completed, um, application even to be submitted to Planning Commission yet. This was basically their initial contact with the community. Again, it is voluntary. They weren't required to do it. Um, so this is really the first time they're going to be, you know, reaching out to talk to people about it, or the neighborhood specifically, I should say.
What was on council then?
Yeah, just, and and I, I, I think it's really important that the community knows that they're going to have plenty of opportunities to participate in this. And so practically speaking, what happens is there's a pre-application conference. Um, and then they submit an application. At that point, Lori has thirty days to do a completeness review. Um, where she determines what if any additional information is missing. And then they have six months to either submit that information, not submit the information or submit part of it. And then it goes to the Planning Commission or usually multiple hearings. And so, and then if there's an appeal, it would go to the city council, uh, which is a reason that it's important that you guys not be involved in the process. Since you might be an appellate body. But there are going to be a lot of opportunities for the community to provide, to gather information. To ask questions and, um, to to publicly participate in the process. And so it's going to be a really robust public process. This isn't something that happens overnight. It's something that happens over the course of months and months.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask you a question? Like, I realize it's your turn. So this mine's just a general question. Do we have any sort of ordinance or requirement related to parking? Because specifically with that piece of property, my concern would be, where's the overflow parking going to be? It's probably going to be across the road at Veterans Park if parking becomes an issue.
Again, it's, I think it's really important that we, I think that that those will be the sort of questions that will need to be asked. I think it's really important that they be asked kind of at the, you know.
Well, my my question, though, specifically is, do we have, I get that part, but my question specifically is, do we have an ordinance or a rule that would come into play in this sort of situation?
It would be in the Development Code. It would be, would specify the, it would specify the, uh, number of parking units per.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
That's my only comment. I just think it's not a good fit for our community as far as I can see.
All right, um. Really, uh. Not a lot this year so far. Uh, spoke with, uh, Railroad after the oil spill. And, uh, they let me know everything that would happen, said if there's any questions or they need to come in and talk, they'll let them know. So apparently it was a. Little park on one car that was malfunctioning and. Because of the way that it interchanged between the railroad, the long haul railroad and their short rail. They don't do an inspection between that interchange because of how it was. It wasn't a sit and pickup where they would inspect it. But apparently somebody caught it on and called the, one of the signs that says, if you see a problem with the railroad, call in.
Oh, no.
That's how it got connected. So somebody in the community did a good thing by calling in and saying, hey, something's wrong with that train. They stopped it and fixed it, so. That was good. Um, also, I'm going to do a general reminder. And give an example of how it was done really well. As everyone knows, there was someone. People complained about Council President Grayson, some of the statements she made at the school district. Uh, we reviewed. The the meetings in question, and at the very beginning of the meeting, she said that she's here as a. You're here as a community member, parent, and then also a fellow elected citizen, which is she's there as a community member, not representing the city. Just a reminder that when speaking in personal opinions, the member or required to say that. We're expressing it on our own terms, our own opinion, and that it's not the city. If you're, the only time you can speak officially for the city is. We can only voice an opinion that a majority of this council has taken to other bodies and boards. You know, we can't go to the county and. Give our own personal opinion and present attendance out of the thing, so, um. It's really important because this shows how the confusion in the community can be because of the positions we have. If we don't make sure it's clear at the very beginning when we're talking on a personal basis on other issues that this is an issue of my personal opinions on something. Versus here is mayor or whatnot, because everyone sees us as the council president, the council is the mayor. Either where we go, Fred Meyer or wherever. So. It was a good way to introduce and the start of that statement was perfect because you made it clear that you were there as a community member and a parent. So, but I also want to make sure that council, it's reminded of this every now and then so that we know when we're out there and how people look what we say. So with that, we are moving forward to an executive session. Under ORS one nine two point six six zero parentheses two parentheses I.